Well, good evening and welcome to the Ferndale City Council meeting for Monday, February 27, 2017. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I liked the student input on that as well. It was more robust tonight. Barb, would you call the roll, please?
Council members Polika.
Here.
Piana.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Leaks May.
Here.
And Mayor Coulter.
Here. Thank you. We have a quorum this evening. The next item of business would be the approval of the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented. Support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Polika. Is there any discussion on the agenda this evening? All right. Barb, would you call the roll?
Piana?
Yes.
Alix May?
Yes.
Paul?
Martin?
Yes.
Polika?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. The agenda is approved. So we'll move on now to presentations. And our first presentation is always one of our favorite presentations of the year, and that is our Ferndale High School Spring Musical. And who's going to come up and introduce it? Take it away. Yeah, we need your mic so that the folks at home can hear.
Okay, fantastic. Hi. My name's Melissa Smith. I'm the theater instructor at Ferndale High School, Ferndale Middle School, also with Casa. And these are some of our fine members. You've got Cat in the Hat, Maisie La Bird, JoJo.
Wait, he's got my sash on. I need one of those.
Gertrude McFuzz and Mr. and Mrs. Mayor of Whoville. And they are here to perform for you some selections from Susical the Musical, which is our spring musical this year. So hopefully you'll get the opportunity to get your taste buds, if you will, wedded for this fine entertainment, and you'll come join us March 18 when we open and we run for two weekends.
Either one. Slide it all the way to the right. Great. You ready? Is it on?
Well done, well done. So again, March 18, 19, 24, 25, and 26 at Ferndale High School over on Pinecrest. So there's a sneak preview, a pretty nice, long sneak preview as well. Thank you so much for being here with us and gracing us with your talent. Wonderful. All right. So we do have another presentation this evening. This one not as fun. Jill, would you come on up, please? Jill Manchek has been our Director of Recreation for how many years, April? I don't know. I don't want to embarrass you.
Five, right?
For the last five years. And we've said this before, but it bears repeating, that no department sort of took the kind of cuts that Recreation had to during the Great Recession. No department has had some of the rather extraordinary staffing and other funding challenges that Recreation has had. We've tried to address that somewhat over the years, but despite those challenges for the past, if it's five to six years, Jill Manchek has led that department with professionalism and creativity and sometimes chicken wire and tape, and kept it all together, and not only kept it together, but helped to grow and make the program prosper. So Jill, we're extremely sad to see you leave the city of Ferndale, but we have a few things we want to say to you, but I want to give you an opportunity to just say anything that you might want to say.
Yeah, it's kind of definitely a bittersweet moment. I've thoroughly enjoyed my time here. It's been such a wonderful experience. I've met some wonderful people and have had some just awesome times here with the city. And like I said before, I was living out of state, away from all my friends and family when I applied for this job, and I'm grateful every day that this job brought me back home and I'm where I am today. So it's definitely, I'm sad to go, but I look forward to seeing all the success that the department will have in the future and keeping in contact with the people that I've met here. So I'm really appreciative of the opportunity that I've been given. I also look forward to taking a new path and spending some time, some more time with my family and my girls. Looking forward to that. So thank you.
And I should add that a demonstration of your professionalism is that you're going to stay on board at a reduced hour level to help get our new Recreation Director up to speed, which is very kind of you to do, and we appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. I don't know, April, did you want to add anything? Or you were her direct supervisor. I don't want to put you on the spot, but...
No, it'll be really sad to see her go. Jill is definitely a great example of a good leader we had within our team, significant team player, always had her act together, her department together, and met challenges head-on within her department. She will be sorely missed. Big hole to fill.
Thank you.
So we have a gift for you, but before we do that, and we have a resolution that I'll read as well, but I don't know if there's anyone else on council that would have any comments. I would have...
I just want to say just I wish you well in your new endeavors and, you know, being with those beautiful girls.
Thank you.
I just want to say it's truly been a pleasure working with you with the Parks and Rec Master Plan over the last year plus. You are so extremely professional, but all the way through it, we have always had a lot of fun. And I'm going to enjoy those memories, and I want to wish you the best with your new endeavors and spending time with your family. That's important.
Thank you.
I just, you've done a remarkable job. Thank you so much. Very few people in this community could have gotten me to dress up and eat pancakes with kids, so thank you. But you'll be sorely missed. Thank you.
And same here. You know, we're always looking for talented people to lead our departments, and you've definitely been someone that council has been able to rely on to deliver some core services for our residents, and so thank you. And I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
So April, come with me, and come on up, Jill. We've got something for you and a resolution to read.
April has something for you as well. Something really nice.
Michael did a great job. We all compiled pictures of some of the, we thought maybe you could remember, the Recreation Department. So touches all different things, I know. That was our goal. This is for you to keep so you don't ever lose Ferndale in your heart.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So let me read the resolution also.
Hold that for, and I'll just read this, and it said that I, Mayor Dave Coulter, on behalf of the Ferndale City Council, extend the city's appreciation to Jill Manchek for her dedicated service as Recreation Director. Jill has served as Recreation Director since 2012. See if I'd have read that before, I'd have known that. And has been instrumental in Take Your Daughter/Son to Work Day, expanding summer camp opportunities, partnering with the Boys and Girls Club, opening up the Coolix Center for Cooling and Warming Centers, and expanding our partnership with Oak Park to include using their swimming pool and other recreational opportunities. Jill is a credit to this community, and it is with heartfelt appreciation that we celebrate your achievement. So Jill, I want to give you that as well. All right. So, yes.
Thank you, Jill. Thank you, Jill. And I might add that we have selected Jill's replacement, and I believe at the next council meeting, we'll be introducing her to the community.
Absolutely.
So stay tuned for that.
Press release shortly coming to announce her. We'll have a press release shortly to announce her.
Excellent. All right. Okay, moving on now to item five, we have a public hearing, and that is a public hearing on the Parks Master Plan update and approval. So Jason, you're going to... J- Jason.
You need Jays around here.
Jordan, Justin, Jason, Joseph, I don't know. Justin is going to enter too, so I'm sorry, the Parks Master Plan.
No problem, no problem.
Wow.
I come from a family of all Jays, so I get used to it.
Is that right?
Yes.
I apologize.
No problem. So as we've been discussing parks and master plans for the overall city, but also for, specific to Parks and Recreation over the past year or so, so excited to get to this point. The Planning Commission held their public hearing last Thursday and recommended approval of the plan. The Parks and Recreation Commission also gave their recommendation for approval last week as well. So just here with a brief summary of what's in the plan for those that may not have seen it. So similar to the overall city master plan that we discussed before, Parks and Recreation Plan is just a little more focused in, obviously, so setting a vision, goal, and action plans over the next five to 10 years to realize the full potential of the parks that we have. This plan aligns with Strategic Plan, the Ferndale Moves Multi-Modal Plan, as well as the big portion of the Master Plan as well. Just like the overall city master plan, it's a state requirement, and so we did a lot of the things you do with normal plans, just recording existing conditions, describing potential policies and actions, and then having an updated plan every five years is also required to apply for some of the grants that Jill and her team have applied for in the past and will be this year as well. So just briefly, the vision was slightly updated from 2010, but the goal, the vision is really to create community through parks, people parks, and programs. I won't go through every single goal, but obviously fiscal sustainability is something that's very important going forward, and that's helped through the Parks Bond that residents approved last year. Investing in staff and making sure that they're properly trained and keeping up with the latest in parks and recreation opportunities. And accessibility was something that was a big part of this plan as well, making sure that when we're planning for parks, that we're bringing these parks up in a standard so that they're accessible to everyone of all ages and abilities. So this will probably look pretty familiar, but the Parks and Recreation Plan was formatted similar to the Master Plan, so we really focused on implementation this time with an action plan list. So DPW, Parks, CED, a number of different players will be involved, but essentially we've got some things that are happening right now. We've got now projects that are coming up that we're working on immediately, and then near over the next one to two years, and then next being three to five years. So if you saw the action plan in the back, 68 action items across all those departments and a few others I might add, and so it's divvied up into specific recommendation chapters, which I won't go into every single one of those 68 action items, but we have a lot of work to do, but now we have a path forward and we know what needs to be done. So with this plan, we also did a lot of community engagement. Community input was great. It really started in 2013 with the Mayor's Blue Ribbon Committee and the survey that went along with that. So 281 responses were part of that. Then, of course, we were working on the overall city master plan, so there was a lot of overlapping engagement, and if you look at the action plan, there's a lot of references to the Master Plan, so they're very much tied together, but everything from non-motorized planning to communication and awareness. And then lastly, in the summer and fall, there was a Parks and Recreation Survey, also got about 280 respondents as well, and so that map that's there is just a representation of the different areas of the city where we received responses, which is great. That survey, just to give you a brief insight to that, you know, the majority of the respondents were between 18 and 50. We were able to reach out to the senior group and a few other groups to try and get some more feedback from them, but hopefully people felt like they were able to give their opinions and feedback on the plan. So there's definitely more details on that in the plan that you can see. But one of the most important things, I think, from the plan is just to know that, you know, we are four square miles. We do have a decent amount of park space in the city, and it's really just a matter of bringing all of that to its full potential, but 73% of residents can access a park within a quarter mile. It's about a five-minute walk, which is pretty important. So, you know, some of those outerlying areas that are in red, even some of the orange areas, you know, part of the implementation items are to try and see how we can have more opportunities for those residents in those areas as well. But a quarter mile is a good baseline, and that was also used in the 2010 plan. As I said, so about six chapters of recommendations, everything from communication and awareness to funding and partnerships. You know, I won't go through every one of those, but communications, everything from creating design standards that match from the Parks and Recreation to everything else the city is communicating is important. Creating, as far as facilities go, creating baseline standards so that any time that we're updating a park, this is the minimum threshold you need to hit for accessibility and sustainability. We talked about sustainability a lot in the overall master plan. It ties to this Parks Plan as well. If there's flooding parks, that means people can't use them, so finding the right green and stormwater infrastructure to go with those improvements will be important going forward. One of the big portions of the plan was a sub-area plan for Martin Road Park, the biggest park in the city. We know that not everything in the plan would happen all at once, but it's something that, you know, gives us a guide for the next, you know, five to 10 years on how we can improve that park and make it, you know, really a jewel for the city. So this is just an overhead site plan view of what is proposed in the plan. Again, it's a guide, you know, as we apply for grants and things like that, we'll keep this in mind, but the goal would be to have, you know, a specific plan for each park in the city, but we started with Martin Road. So, but speaking of all the other parks, we did have wish lists that are in the back of the plan that sort of outline, you know, what residents were interested in at their neighborhood parks, and just a little brief background on each of those parks. So this is just the Wilson Park example of what you could see there in the future. Obviously, more engagement will be happening going forward and prioritization in each of the, for each of these parks will happen ahead, but again, this is a good guide as we move forward. So as far as implementation goes, those action items are definitely something we're all talking about already. Right now, we're talking about using the city's website as the primary up-to-date center and communication center for everything parks at some point moving forward. We're looking at agreements and policies with the public schools on how to maximize benefits, you know, utilizing some of the great facilities that they have there, and also extending partnerships like we have with Oak Park to use their pool in summertime, and finding other partnerships like that is something we're already exploring. Looking at water features, adding those to the parks, and then also, I mentioned it, I think, at the last meeting, but we're planning a Ferndale Bike Month in May, which I'll bring more details about soon, but that aligns with the Parks event that's been happening for a few years that's been really successful, Ferndale Bike Rodeo in May. So already things in the works. Really, the next steps, should you move forward with adoption, is setting, you know, budget parameters for each of these improvements that we've been talking about with City Council in March and April. And then moving forward, we would determine, you know, the priority improvements with City Council and the Parks Commission and staff. So here to answer any other questions you might have.
All right. But first, we have a public hearing.
Yes.
So with that introduction, I'm going to open up the public hearing and ask if there's anyone here from the public that would like to address council on the adoption of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan this evening. And I don't believe I see anyone, so we will close the public hearing on the Parks Master Plan, and now I will open it up to council if there's any comments, questions.
If I may, I'd just like to say the Planning Commission had a special meeting on last Thursday to review the plan, and they unanimously endorsed the plan. There were some comments from the audience about the need to make sure we focus in the future on southwest, southeast Ferndale, and then the east side as we look towards improvements as we move forward. And another comment that I thought was really particularly poignant is next time we go out and do a survey, we have more children represented because they're 22% of the users of the park. But otherwise, it was well received, and kudos to a great job putting it together, you and the committee.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions?
Based on the picture, I mean, based on what I saw on the screen here, it looks like Martin Road. I mean, it seems like every bit of space is going to be utilized, and that's pretty exciting. I don't know the acreage of Martin Road Park, but it looks like it's going to be a centrally located kind of a, well, not centrally located, but more towards the east side, but area for many families, residents, seniors, everyone, kind of something for everyone to enjoy. So thank you for all the work you've put into it. Planning Commission also. Parks and Recreation.
Yes.
I'm excited.
And I just wanted to say to DPW Department, Lloyd and Jill as well, and Parks and other members, they really did the heavy lifting with this plan and really came out pretty well.
It looks great.
I'm very excited about the plan, and I think, spokeswoman Leaks May, you mentioned Martin Road Park, which could be potentially very exciting. It is our largest park with the opportunity to do the most stuff. We have to temper our excitement by the fact that to do everything on the list is more than...
About $8 million for all parks in Martin Road.
About $8 million. To put that in perspective, we got about $2 million-ish set aside in the infrastructure bond. There are some capital dollars that we can use going forward that would be dedicated, but this plan is going to require us to strategically prioritize what we want to do, go after grants and that sort of stuff. So it is a vision of where we could be. It's not a promise of what we'll be like next year, but having said that, it's a very exciting vision, and I think maybe for the, I don't know, for the first time that I remember, we actually have a roadmap to how we could get to a really exciting and dramatically different park system in the city as we move forward. So great job.
Well, if I may, just to add on to that, a great Parks Plan, but I really think the difference now that Jill is leaving on a really high note, you know, sort of like a mic drop with a master plan, is that it really is taking a different look at how to integrate our parks and the... to integrate our parks and the quality of life and of, of our residents. So rather than seeing them as a separate entity of a plot of land, it's like, how do you connect, create stronger neighborhoods? How do you connect people to use parts of the community that may, they may not have usually thought of going there because it was harder to get there, or there wasn't a lot for them to do there? So this is really about making our parks accessible to all, all ages, so that everyone feels like they have something to do inside these parks. And I think that's where this Parks Plan is the vision of to go forward, which is why I'm really excited by it. Obviously, the, the funding of it, making sure that we're really strategic in funding it over the next few years, but we have a strategic planning process underway that is going to help us get better at putting priorities together and clear and delivering on them. So, all the systems and cranks and things are going in the right direction. It's working.
It is.
I just want to say that I know that the Parks and Recreation Commission is very proud of this Master Plan. They've actually been working on it for about three years. They started the foundation work three years ago in identifying each park and saying, what do we want to see happen in each of these parks? And that was the foundation work for when we started working on the Master Plan last year. So I want to thank them for all the hard work that they, they've done and they, they continue to do, as well as Lloyd and Jill in leading that commission forward. So, I'm very excited about watching this plan come into reality over the next couple of years.
And at least one of the members is here, right? Dennis is part of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board? Appreciate your work. I don't know that anyone else is here, but yeah, that, that, that's a great point, that that, that group has been involved for a long time, and it's a long time in coming, but wonderful. All right, any other comments or questions? If not, we need a motion.
I would move that we approve the Master Plan and adopt the appropriate resolution in the packet.
Support.
By Martin and supported by Polika. Last comments or questions by anyone at council or audience? All right. Barb, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Piana.
Yes.
Leaks May.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Polika.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That plan is adopted. Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yeah. We don't have the horns.
I don't have the horns. Sorry.
All right. Our next item of business would be called to audience, and that is your opportunity, if you're here with us in person, to come on up and address council on any issue that you'd like that's not on the agenda, because you can speak to that when we get there. But come on up, and you have three minutes to speak on any issue that you would like. Give us your name and address if you're comfortable doing that, and the floor is yours. And I see our DDA Director is going to take the first opportunity.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, I, I know I normally would go during a scheduled presentation time, but I didn't get in there this time.
That's all right.
I wanted to make one quick announcement. The DDA, coming up next week, in combination with the Ferndale Area Chamber of Commerce, is hosting an event. It is on March 10th. It is called Healthy Happy Ferndale. It will be taking place at the Rust Belt Market. That starts at 5:00, goes from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. that Friday. And the whole idea behind this, if you'll remember, we brought in some professional assistants at the DDA to look at several market studies that have been done over the years, to identify different sectors that were doing well in Ferndale and that we could help promote. That's where this idea came from initially. So we're looking at health and wellness businesses. We have 25 businesses participating, all downtown businesses, and so you can come out and look at different things like yoga, meditation, massage, exercising, supplements, so on and so forth. Again, that's Friday, March 10th, 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Rust Belt Market, and we have some flyers that we're going to be hanging up around at the different businesses downtown, and I just wanted to let you know about that.
Sounds like a great event, yeah. Anyone have any questions, Barry?
No.
Excellent. Thanks, sir. Anyone else like to address council? Yeah, just come on up. Good evening.
Hello, my name is Brian Popple. I live at 2841 Cleveland Street with my fiance. I am also around by house of my neighbor and one of these five businesses. We live in a duplex together next to each other, and I've been living here for about two years. And one of the things that's really attracted me to Ferndale was our downtown area. I really love it, it's very important to us, and obviously the expansion of the downtown is a great thing. And so it's also very exciting that the, the recent expansion of downtown area that does supply that's all overseen.
Our, our tech guy says that mic must not be working right.
Well, that's-
If you don't mind using that one.
No, that's fine, that's fine.
Great.
So like I said, the ODS supply's been very well-received by a lot of people. Unfortunately, for my, my neighbors and I, living right next to, we haven't had quite as good of a, a relationship with them, mostly just based on their, their concert space, being there in such close proximity to us. We've tried to resolve issues with police, with our landlord, with the owner himself, and we've, it's been a really rough two months.
With the volume, I'm sorry, with the volume of the concert space, do you mean? Or the congestion of car or-
It's, it's partially the, we've kind of come to the conclusion, at first it was just the, the noise, but then the owner tried soundproofing more and more and more. At this point, it's, it, it kind of hasn't been a progression of a decline in noise. It's, it depends on what band seems to be playing. It'll be either louder or quieter than the last time. And at this point, we, we've, we're, we're really just wondering if perhaps it's a zoning thing where we, where there's DOD Supply and Alleyway and then our duplex, and one of the theories we have, and we don't know anything about city planning, but, or sound waves and stuff, but the, it, we almost wonder if the Alleyway is working like an echo chamber to where we're hearing the thumping of the bass and the drums and even the singing almost every time they have a concert, and it's been very, if I seem a little rattled, it's because we've had a lot of concerts recently, and it's been, like, we work full-time all throughout the week, weekends, we need to come home and relax, and we just haven't, we're having a really rough time of it. Obviously, I said I love the downtown area, I love businesses, the expansion's a good thing. It's, we, we, we almost have come to the conclusion where we wonder if our lot either should be a residence, or the business next to us should be a concert space, and that both, should they both exist? We, we, we seem to be in a very strange lot. We're literally on a corner, and we've just been having a, a very rough time. We, I know our neighbor is actually planning on moving. We've had to consider, can we stay another 12 months next to a concert space?
And have you talked to our, our economic, our Community Economic Development Department before?
Yeah, I would love to.
Yeah, okay. So Jordan, raise your hand or whatever. If you guys would exchange information, because Jordan is in charge of, which is code enforcement, it's sound ordinances, it's all of that kind of stuff, and, and he, he can work with you, and I, I don't know what the resolution could be, but-
I came here just because we didn't know else.
I appreciate that. No, you, you did the right thing. We're happy, yeah, that's why we're here, and that's why we have our department directors here, and Jordan is the director of the department that I think can at least help hear your issues and see what we can do to, to make that situation better for you.
All right, thanks, Justin.
I have one.
Yes.
You're right at the corner of Vester and Leland, the first house.
Yes, it's a townhouse on the corner of Vester and Leland.
Okay.
It's kind of a weird lot, so-
I've got the Google Maps up, so I just wanted to make sure where you are.
It's a little weird if you look at it, it's-
I have the Google.
Good, thank you. Thanks for coming. Anyone else like to address council this evening? Is there a coming or going? Nope, okay. Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on now to the consent agenda, and the consent agenda is items that council considers routine, and we enact in one motion unless council removes something from the consent agenda. So let me read that now. Item A is the approval of the 2017 enrollment in the PoliceOne.com Academy, April 1st, 2017, to March 31st, 2018, for 46 seats, $58 each, for a total of $2,668. Item B is the approval of the 2017 High Density Drug Trafficking Area Subrecipient Agreement between the County of Oakland and the City of Ferndale. Item C is the approval of the license agreements as submitted with Dino Drop Inc. for the outdoor cafe uses on the pedestrian alley, as authorized, and to authorize the mayor to sign that agreement. Item D is the approval of the license agreements as submitted with Jay's Penalty Box LLC for outdoor cafe use on the pedestrian alley, and also to authorize the mayor to sign that agreement. Item E is the approval, the approval to approve, the submitted ordinance number 1191 to amend Chapter 16 Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Public Places, Article 1, in, in general, to add Section 16 and 17, and 1618, and ordinance number 1192 to amend Chapter 16 Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Public Places, Article 1, in general, Section 165 of the Ferndale Code, as submitted by the city attorney. And finally, item F is the approval of the bills and payroll as submitted by the city manager's office, subject to review by the council finance committee. What is council's pleasure on the consent agenda this evening?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support. Moved by Piana and supported by Polika. Now, is there any discussion on the consent agenda?
This is for us?
Yeah.
Okay. I just, let's see, where is it? Consent agenda item B. I was just wondering if that was similar to the, I guess, topic that we, what, what's the similarities, similarities between that topic and the one that we actually voted down on in, was it November, December?
I'll have Chief Collins come up and explain this particular grant.
Okay. Yeah. Chiefs.
Good evening, sir.
Your Honor, this grant is a federal grant that we have received for many years. The, the difference in this case is, is that the county now that administrators administrates this grant has requested that we become a sub-recipient of that grant. This is not the same grant from last June that we spoke of. This is, federal government declares areas throughout the country as high-intensity drug trafficking areas. Detroit and the surrounding communities are one of those areas, and they grant funds to the state and then to the county for reimbursement of overdoses for narcotics investigations.
For clarity, though, it's not aimed at one particular drug type other than illegal drugs, right?
And we've received this in the past. It's just that the pass-through was through the state or the, or the feds as opposed to the county?
Feds to the state, to the county.
This time, but in the past, the county wasn't-
It's always been that way, but the county administratively has, I don't know if it's a federal requirement, but they, the sub-recipient status is new this year.
Okay.
If I may, through the chair, how long have we received this grant? I mean, this-
I would have to go through the records, but I would estimate about 15 years.
Other questions, or does that address your questions, Councilwoman? Thanks, all right. Any other comments or questions on the consent agenda? All right, hearing none. Barb, I'll ask you to call the roll, please.
Okay. Councilmembers Martin.
Yes.
Polika.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Leaks May.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. Consent agenda is adopted. Moving on now to the regular agenda, we have just one item this evening, and that is a resolution authorizing the publication of notice of intent to issue capital improvement bonds and declaration of intent to reimburse as submitted by the Assistant City Manager. And Joe, you want to introduce that item? Not back up yet, all right.
Yes, this, tonight marks the first step in the process forward towards the West Troy parking development that's been a discussion over the past few months. This is a formal step that the city has to present to the, the city council, to request that they approve that the city move forward with issuing bonds. You'll note that in the resolution, we included a not-to-exceed amount. Based on some preliminary analysis, we, we don't expect the project to exceed 20 million, so that is our goal, is to keep that under 20 million. So we are requesting permission to publish that notice, and we do have bond counsel, Steve, may I with us to answer any questions you may have about the issuance of the bond?
All right, thank you, Joe. Are there any questions? Of clarification or motion?
I was just wondering, can you just walk people through the process of the interesting and widely-known process of bond issuance? Can you just talk a little bit about-
I'll ask Steve to walk through that process as the expert.
Even he laughed when you said interesting, but-
Very exciting.
Right, yeah. What can people, what can we expect through this process?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It, it depends on the type of the bond that you're issuing. This, in this case, this is a capital improvement bond, which since 2001, cities, counties, townships have been allowed to issue. You can issue this bond without a vote of the electors, so long as you first publish a notice in the newspaper. The notice is provided as part of the resolution, it needs to be published as a one-quarter-page display advertisement. And electors, if they wanted to, they could circulate a petition, and if it was a legally valid petition, had sufficient signatures, then you would be prohibited from moving forward from that point unless the issue is first approved by the voters, okay? They have a 45-day window to submit that petition from the time the notice publishes. If the notice publishes and the timeframe expires, as is generally the case, then the city is free in the future, when it's ready, to issue the bond up to the amount stated in the notice. We'll be back before city council at least one more time with what's called a bond authorizing resolution, which has all the, all the terms of the bond, the maturity dates, the maximum interest rate, discounts permitted, things like that. And those terms are specified by the city's financial advisor, which is Benzinski and Company, Bobby Benzinski. And then after that step, the bonds are actually marketed and sold to most likely an underwriter during a competitive public sale, and then a closing date is established, and that's the date when the city actually issues the bonds, sells the bonds to the underwriter in return for the purchase price, the face amount of the bonds. And then you move forward over the next year to three years to develop your project. In a nutshell, those are the steps. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other questions or comments?
I just want to make a clarification. So you mentioned that the electric, electric has the ability to issue and sell these bonds because they're capital improvement. However, it's also because we are not going to be affecting homeowners or property owners' taxes. These will be paid off through fees that we collect through, in this instance, parking.
Yes, that's, that's a great point. You're, you're exactly right. Unlike the Parks and Road Bond, which the voters did approve, and you submitted to the ballot of your own will, that allowed you to raise a revenue source, to raise a debt millage, to pay that bond. These bonds, they are limited tax bonds, so you're not authorized to levy any additional taxes than you already have the power to through your charter and state statute, so you're right.
Good point. Yeah. All right. Other questions or comments? A motion would be in order.
I'd move that we approve the intent resolution as presented in the packet.
Support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Piana. All right, other comments or questions of council or anyone here? All right, Barb, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Polika.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Leaks May.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Thank you, sir, for being here. Thank you, Joe. That concludes our regular agenda. The next item of business would be call to council. Chief Collins, anything from the police department this evening?
I have nothing to say.
All right. Jill, anything from Recreation one last time? Yeah, we're still using the other mic, yep.
Just one last announcement. Our daddy-daughter dance was a couple weeks ago, so I just want to thank everyone that attended. We have had over 60 couples that were in attendance that night. I want to thank Treat Dreams, they donated some ice cream for us. I wanted to thank Brightside Dental, they provided refreshments for the group. I wanted to thank the folks over at the high school, they were a huge help in getting us set up and tore down that night. We had a great night, we had Tinkerbell show up, so the girls definitely love that, so it was a, it was a great evening, so thank you.
Thank you. Jenny, anything from HR this evening? All right. Joe, anything else from- Joe, anything else from your department? You being assistant city manager.
Just a few things I wanted to actually say. Jill, thank you. It's been a pleasure working with you, really has. She's been a great leader and just a joy to work with and really, yeah, I'll miss her. She's the one who introduced me to the seniors. Secondly, I do want to say we'll have a more formal update. Council and the public can expect a more formal update on where we're at with the parking development project in May at one of the council meetings. So it'll just be more of a comprehensive update.
Thank you, Joe. Lloyd, anything from DPW this evening? Yes, he says, with enthusiasm.
The unusual weather that we've been having in February prompted a lot of questions about yard waste. So just a quick update, curbside yard waste begins again the week of April 3rd. Begins the week of April 3rd, and residents can drop off bagged yard waste at the stock facility at 995 Coolidge between 14 and 15 mile for the next month until their curbside pickup begins.
If I may, through the chair, how much salt are we sitting on?
Why, you want to buy some?
I bet, I bet. Thank you.
Can we sell it at a discount?
Carol, anything from finance this evening? All right. Kara, anything from communications, community engagement?
Nothing this evening.
Nothing this evening, all right. Barb, anything from the clerk's office this evening?
Probably, but I can't think of a thing. Marnie will be back soon.
Okay, very good. April, anything from the city manager's office?
No, other than, I, Joe, we were just back and forth, he meant we're going to have a parking update in March, when we think we were in May.
Oh, in March.
I think he has baby on the brain, just saying. That's all I am.
All right. Dan, anything this evening?
Nothing, I'm your honor.
All right. Councilman Martin?
Three things. One, when I indicated Jill was the only person to get me to dress up, I was not Tinkerbell. I clearly needed to express that, right out there.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah. Number two, the Ferndale Community Foundation will have grant applications available beginning Wednesday, March 1st. These are micro grants for area nonprofits up to $2,500 for projects within the city of Ferndale. Applications will be available at our website, www.ferndalecommunityfoundation.org. They'll be available at city hall, or you can call me at 248-672-4067. And then lastly, this Wednesday also, March 1st, is Pride Night at Rosie O'Grady's. If you're thinking or looking for a place to go to dinner, at 7:00, Rosie's will have a 50/50 raffle to raise money for Ferndale Pride. So I'd encourage you to go there. Thank you.
Excellent. Councilwoman Leaks May?
Okay. A couple things. So first, I'd like to congratulate our mayor for receiving an award at the Ferndale Mardi Gras regarding all of your involvement regarding Ferndale Pride. So you have an award coming for that.
Wow, that's cool.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Also, so you've heard me speak of Ferndale Radio. I just want to just let you know that there are two benefits coming up. One would be March 11th at the Ferndale Friends location in Oak Park at 7:00. And there's also going to be another benefit on March 12th at the Loving Touch from 1:00 to 7:00 PM. So I just wanted, if you would like to come out and show your support or just listen to some good music, please do. Also, my business shout-out this month is going out to The Rocket. The Rocket is a great, they have some great novelty gifts and they, in particular, always have this certain candy that I loved as a child, always in stock, so I always go there to get it. So please, give your business to The Rocket if you want some unique gifts and just a fun place to just check out some neat items.
Get some Pop Rockets or whatever, Pop Rocks, whatever those are.
Yes. And that's it for me.
Excellent, thank you. Councilman Pollocka?
I only have one thing. Happy Punchki Day tomorrow.
All right. Are you bringing punchkis or just-
No, I'm just wishing you.
Oh, wow, all right. Although Treat Dreams makes a punchki ice cream that is, they're doing again this year.
Oh, it's fantastic.
And if you haven't had it, trust me, it tastes just like the real thing. Yeah, amazing. All right. Mayor Protown, Piana?
Nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight, all right. Just a couple of things. I want to express mine and the city's condolences to Councilman Pollocka. Sorry, it's always difficult to lose a parent and I know you lost your dad unexpectedly last week. And just know that you're in a lot of people's thoughts and prayers this week and you have our sympathies. Thank you, thank you. It's never too early to start planning for the Ferndale Education Foundation Dinner, which is going to be March 31st, a Friday this year, that both mayors Metzger and I will be co-hosting. So if you haven't started thinking about that, reserve March 31st for your Ferndale Education Foundation Dinner, always a great event.
Do you know when the tickets go on sale?
March 1st. March 1st, so this week.
Wednesday's a big day.
Tickets on sale this week, huh?
Wednesday's a big day.
Yep. And with that, that concludes our regular agenda. We have a closed session this evening, and so I would entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I would move that we go into closed session, A, to consult with attorney regarding a settlement strategy in connection with specific pending litigation regarding Sri Dev Inc. versus Ferndale, pending litigation under MCL 15.268E, and B, to consult attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with specific pending litigation regarding Krishna Krupa Inc. versus Ferndale, pending litigation under MCL 15.268E.
Support.
Moved by Martin, supported by Pollocka. Any discussion? Barb, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you.